And that's, and George, you're good to go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. We are calling the Thursday, December 15, 2022 Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting to Order. The Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all participants to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. The Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals is meeting in person, and we have a Zoom call and participation options. The meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Citrus Community Television and Facebook Live. The recorded meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube. The link to Zoom is on the website with the passcode. People can participate again in person or via Zoom. With that, we will call our first application, the application of Carl J. Affacella, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6, and Sections 8, 10.2A, and 193 of the Citrus zoning bylaw bylaws, and/or any other relief that may be granted to allow the raising and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located at 16 Preston Avenue. So, Mirabito, are you here on this application?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
And we can absolutely hear you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is Paul Mirabito from Ross Engineering Company, representing the applicant for the, for 16 Preston Avenue. Gene, can, can you share the plan with us?
Yes.
Hey, guys.
Yes, I'm here in the middle. Okay, thank you. The subject lot is 10,166 square feet, which is a conforming lot based upon lot area. However, the lot frontage of 89.91 feet and the lot width is less than 100. Those are the only two nonconformities for the existing structure. What the applicant's proposing to do is to raise the existing structure, which was built in 1920, and reconstruct it, and the location is shown on our site plan. The reconstructed dwelling would meet all the required setbacks, both front, rear, and side yard. The, as I mentioned, the house was built in 1920. We did file with the Historic Commission. The project architect had a meeting with them on site, I believe, last Saturday, and they indicated that they would allow the house to be raised, and they would formalize their decision in a, in approval at their scheduled meeting later this month. The only other permit we would need is to perform, is to prepare a stormwater design as we're going to increase the amount of impervious area by more than 25% with a proposed structure. The proposed increase is 340%, 346% over and above the existing dwelling. The changes in grades on the lot would probably be very minimal. As I mentioned earlier, the proposed setbacks for the new structure are all conforming on all four sides. So I think with that, I'll end and answer any questions the members may have.
Bob, anything on this one here?
The only thing I would ask, and I think I know the answer, Paul, is that the two parking spaces required are side by side in that proposed two minutes concrete block.
Yes, they'd be to the left side of the house as you look out to the street.
They say they'd have to be side by side as opposed to end to end.
Yes, they would be, yeah.
Everything else seems perfectly straightforward. You might make one other comment. Anytime a retaining wall has a drop on the other side of it of over 30 inches, a fence is needed to protect somebody from falling, falling over that drop.
Okay. Yeah, we, well, we can provide for that if it's necessary, that we do the stormwater work, and that'll be included on the plan that goes to the building inspector for the building permit, so it complies with the building code.
Very good. We will turn to the audience, to the community here in the room first, and then to folks on Zoom in case they have any questions. Anybody here have any questions? No? Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Comments, any questions? Guys, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the proposed raise and reconstruct of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling shown on a plan prepared by Ross Engineering and dated October 6, 2022, does not create any new nonconformities, and to the extent that it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that, and...
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, thank you. Okay, have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
First one, and can you, we'll go over these after, as we descend off.
Yep.
Just to keep things on. I know that's our sentence, right?
Sorry, show up, right?
Next, next thing everybody takes.
I think we only have one on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Right, so we'll...
So far.
Where I'm not there, right?
Yeah.
So, really good. All right, so for the second application of Hugh White and Susan Tierch of 27 First Avenue, Citrus Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2A of the Citrus zoning bylaw, and/or any, any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 27 First Avenue, Citrus Mass, and increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Do we have anyone here on that application?
Yep.
Please come up here. Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hugh White, 27 First Avenue, Citrus.
Susan Tierch.
So, White, Susan Tierch, thank you for coming in. Can you walk us through this application, please?
Yeah, so the lot is conforming. It's in R3, it's got 100 feet of frontage. Front of the house, we've got more than 30 feet, back of the house, we've got more than 20 feet. The left side of the house, as you're looking at, has got plenty of room off the 8 feet. It's really the right side as you're looking at it. The existing structure, which was built, I think, in 1953, is a couple of 7.8 inches from the required 8-foot setback. So, we're looking to add, Bill, maybe you can see the dimensions there. We've pushed that side in, so it's over the 8-foot setback. And we've actually pushed it a little bit to the right. We take out a window in the bathroom just to make it big enough so that it's, it's livable. We're not adding to the problem. I don't know the technical term for that. We just have the one issue there, we've got the pre-existing addition.
Great. So, as the proposed addition... This is, I think, where I was confused, right, for the plan. The proposed addition, yeah, which appears to be at various points, 20.4 feet down with 16.6 feet off the back. So, so the rear of the proposed addition is 20.4 feet.
Correct. That's correct, yep.
So, the, okay, so that's, that's what I was trying to understand. So that the side yard setback, the maximum side yard setback will go from 7.8 feet to 8.3 feet, is that correct?
Yes.
So you, you will, you will bring the new, well, I wouldn't say the new structure. The, the existing structure is not conforming. The new portion will be conforming as to side and rear yard setbacks. Front yard is not an issue. It's not a problem.
That's, yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay. Got it. That's what I was trying to understand, trying to reconcile this with the plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob?
No, I mean, it's just as you've said, the, the nonconformity is...
In the existing dwelling.
Only in the existing dwelling, and it's very minimal. It's a shame almost to have these people go, now, who go through this process, but worst-case scenario is somebody could appeal the issuance of a building permit, you know, based on, on this...
That they didn't go through the process.
Situation, right.
That's right, because it's a, it's a not-conforming dwelling.
Right, that seldom happens, but this is, it's a good felt-suspenders approach.
Absolutely. And we have an increase in square footage over 20%, it's 44.3% increase.
Yep.
Which is, again, you know, not, not the issue, it's just the board. Questions?
Do you have my question?
Yes, I was just trying to clear it up. Anybody from the audience here on this 27 First Avenue? No? Anyone on Zoom on 27 First Avenue? No? Motion from the board. I'll make a motion. That the proposed addition on the, so on applicant's application for a proposed addition to 27 First Avenue, as shown on the plan by Kittle Land Survey and dated March 5, 2022, one, it should be approved, and two, that such addition will introduce no new nonconformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, those are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Granted. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Very, very easy. She was just, you saw, one question. Could clear it up. The most of the destruction.
Thank you.
All right, we now have on our third application of Karen and Kevin Straley of 31 Allen Place, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2 of the Citrus zoning bylaw, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 31 Allen Place, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Name for the record.
All right, thank you. Jeff Assett, Suburban Engineer with Morris Engineering.
See you again.
Likewise. So this property is 31 Allen Place. The applicants are Karen and Kevin Straley. We're here for a Chapter 48, Section 6 finding and special permit for Section 8, 10.2 of the zoning bylaws. The project is to raise and reconstruct a single-family home, and the property is 8,637 square feet, all of which is upland to the R3 zoning district, and there's currently a house on the property that was built in 1925. The current nonconformities are the lot area, where 10,000 square feet is required, and the front yard setback. Currently, the front yard setback is 14.5 feet, and 30 feet is the requirement. So this proposal, again, is to raise and reconstruct that home. The new home will comply with all of the setbacks, including the front yard setback. The existing floor area is 1,100 square feet. The proposed floor area is 3,400 square feet, which is a 211% increase. The deal with this property can be, can be approved. It does not create any new nonconformities. It actually eliminates a nonconformity by bringing the front yard into compliance, and the size of the home is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood.
So that's, so we have a new plan, right, so that's part one. And then we have a calculation, just so that everybody understands, that the calculation for the average distance of buildings on the same side of the street is the locus of this, of this function. That number, which is different than the, than the zoning bylaw, is set at, the calculation has it set at 17.4, setback is 17.4, and you folks are going to do it at 17.5 within that, that limit, if you will, that measurement. Okay, so that's a year, I think, which is different than the original application. Thank you for being there. Questions? Look, I'll look for Bob first. Bob, your plan, questions?
Yeah, we have a setback. Exception is here taking advantage of properly. The only other thing I would ask, Jeff, is does this increase the previous area of the lot by more than 25%?
Yes, it will, so it will.
So you'll need a stormwater.
Okay.
Just on board?
Okay.
Anyone here in the room that may have a question? Anyone on Zoom that may have a question? Again, seems straightforward. Your turn.
I make a motion to approve the proposed raise and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling as shown in a plan prepared by Morris Engineering dated 12/14/22, or actually dated 10/20/22, and then revised 12/14/22. Does not create any non-new, new nonconformities, and to the extent that it intensifies any existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Sure.
Is that set?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good job on the provision. Thank you. These are lots easier.
Yeah.
Are you here for this one, too?
I am.
All right, on the fourth application of Daniel and Jacqueline Harden, 58 Egypt Beach Road, Citrus Mass, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2 of the Citrus zoning bylaw, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the construction of addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 58 Egypt Beach Road, and increasing the gross floor area. One more time, all right.
This property is 58 Egypt Beach Road, the applicants are Daniel and Jacqueline Harden, and we're here for the same filing, the Chapter 48, Section 6 finding, and a special permit for Section 8, 10.2 of the zoning bylaws. This application is for addition to a single-family home. The lot is approximately 7,800 square feet in the R3 zoning district, and the home was built in 1952. The lot size, the current nonconformities are the lot size, 10,000 is required in current, where the lot is 7,842 square feet. The required lot width is 100, and the existing width is 82.1, and the required front yard setback is 30, and the existing is 22.8. What we're proposing is, if you're looking at the house from the front, a proposed addition on the left-hand side that will consist of a garage and living space. The setback does comply to the rear and the side setbacks, and the front yard setback is more conforming than the existing house. The addition brings the living area up to 2,190 square feet, which is a 47% increase, which is consistent with the neighborhood, and it does not create any new nonconformities.
That's right, the, the addition is, is within the setbacks. Okay.
A few things, as most of them, Jeff, well, all of them, I'm pretty sure Jeff already knows. Part of the lots in the floodline watershed protection district, which restricts new construction, however, there's no construction proposed within the limits of that district. On your plan, it's a, it's better red on the extreme upper right-hand side of the lot. It parallels the lot line as a reconstruction. Does not approach any. So that's a good one. The whole property or most of the property, and most of the house is in an 815, 14 flood zone. So FEMA is going to rear their ugly head, and the cost of this addition, if it's above 50% of the assessed or appraised or fair market value of the house, is going to trigger FEMA compliance for not only the addition, but the entire house. So I would presume that's not the owner's intended desire, and so we'll have to carefully monitor how the addition cost is relative to the cost of the existing house. Right now, it's assessed at 288.7 on the assessor's card. To increase that number to fair market value, probably you'd want to go to a private appraiser, and that would give you a higher value, 50% of, you know, to, to, your threshold would, would increase in that case in terms of cost of the project. That's, that's about it. I think that's the, that's going to be the vermin.
Right. Which is not per se ours.
No, it has nothing...
As far as zoning is already invited, it is, as it is from a, from a...
As it's coming into, into play until it gets to my office.
That's right. Board?
Well, one of the things, well, again, Jeff, well, this building, our conditions, whatever.
Yeah, that's right. Although, although it's not in the floodline, it's close.
Well, it's, it's, it's winding the, the, the...
Yeah. Property.
It's within the setback of the order you've negotiated.
Board, good?
Yeah.
People in the room, good? Excellent. People online, questions, comments?
Let's hear it, man.
All right. So, this is on our fourth application of Daniel and Jacqueline Harden, 58 Egypt Beach Road, Citrus Mass, for special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, 10.2 of the zoning bylaw, to allow for the construction of addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. I move that we approve, and then we find that the proposed addition, per the plan of Morris Engineering dated 11/9/2022, introduces no new nonconformities, and to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, those are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On to our fifth application of Daryl Waymire, if I can pronounce that correctly, of 4.5 Lincoln Street, Lincoln Street, HAM, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 8, 10.2 of the Citrus zoning bylaws, and/or other, any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at 307 Old Oakin Bucket Road, the road from there. Do we have anybody here in the room on the application? No. Do we have someone online for the application?
Yes, that's me, Daryl Waymire.
Daryl Waymire. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, can you walk us through?
Absolutely. So, the, the house was built in 1946, and we are proposing a addition of a garage and living space of 1,062 square feet. The existing square footage is 1,820 square feet for a total proposed of 2,882 square feet, which is consistent with the other homes in the neighborhood. The total increase of square footage percentage is 58%. It is currently a existing nonconforming lot for a couple of reasons. One, the, the lot area is only 24,000 square feet. The required is 40,000. It does meet the requirements for a frontage. It is a corner lot, so it is sometimes confusing on the, what's the, does have two front setbacks. So one of the side set, one of the front setbacks on Maple Street is currently 22.1 feet as opposed to the required 30 feet, and we are proposing to not do anything more nonconforming and staying at the 22.1 feet with the addition. The addition, the proposal also includes raising of a detached garage, and that would actually increase the setback from 47, from 27 feet to 45 feet in the rear setback. And is there anything else I could answer?
At this time, thank you for walking us through that. Much appreciated. Bob?
I would only wonder here again if a stormwater permit might come into play if you're increasing the impervious area, meaning roofs, decks, patios, driveways, by more than 20% with the new project over what it is now. You will need to go to the planning board for stormwater special permit.
I was afraid we might do that, yep.
Everything, everything else seems fine.
Anyone in the room on this? Questions? Online? Oh, do we have a question?
Quick question, the homeowner on the impervious. Just a clarification on the rule, is it 20% increase to the existing space, or is it 25% of the lot area?
If you increase the impervious by more than 25%, so if you're, pick a number, if your impervious surfaces total 1,000 square feet right now, and you increase then so that the new total is over 1,250 square feet, you would need to see the stormwater special permit.
Got it. Even if the total impervious area was less than 25% of the, the total lot size?
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
For my, my, the applicant or the owner?
Yeah, Mr., is it Matt and Lily?
Yes, Matthew, George, and Lily who? H-O-U?
Your address, please?
307 Old Oakin Bucket, Citrus Mass, O2066.
Okay, thank you.
So, David?
Go ahead. Want to make a motion? Okay, make a motion that the proposed addition of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling as shown on a plan prepared by CNG Survey Company dated July 22, 2022, does not create any new nonconformities, and to the extent it creates any existing nonconformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood and that the board grant the relief.
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Granted.
Thank you very much.
That was number five. Six. Application of Peter and Elizabeth Blanchard, 9 Anthony Street, Ullwood Vexer, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Sections 8, 10.2, and for... and four seventy eight, six hundred and five law and or any other relief to the board of appeals may grant to allow the raising and reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at three forty-seven Central Ave. And increasing the gross floor area by more than percent. All right, again, one more time, name to the record.
Jeff Hassett with Morse Engineering.
Hey, Jeff. Uh, walk us through it.
All right, this property is three forty-seven Central Ave in Hummerock. The applicants are Peter and Elizabeth Blanchard. And we're seeking, uh, chapter forty-eight, section six finding and special permits from sections eight, ten point two and section four seventy. Um, the property is five thousand square feet, zone R three. Um, it is in the floodplain and watershed protection district, uh, primarily the rear portion of the, of the lot is. And the home that's on the property was built in nineteen forty. The, the non-conformities are frontage and width, which are both fifty where a hundred is required. Uh, lot area is five thousand where ten thousand square feet is required. And the front yard setback is nine point seven feet where thirty is required. And the side yard setbacks required is eight. On the right-hand side, the setback is two point four and on the left-hand side, seven point seven. Um, the home is in the, in the FEMA flood zone and it's currently non-FEMA compliant. Uh, the, the proposed new home is very similar in the footprint. Um, it will be elevated on wooden piles to bring it into full FEMA compliance. Um, the house is a little bit narrower. By doing so, it eliminates the non-conformity on the left-hand side and, and it makes a conformity, the, the non-conformity on the right-hand side slightly more conformant. And the front setback will be the same as the existing. Um, the existing home is not a hundred and eighty square feet. The proposed home is two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight square feet. It's a hundred and forty percent increase. Um, and it, uh, layout has been designed so that it creates no new non-conformities and the home is similar to other homes in the neighborhood.
So basically, same house, you move it a little bit out of form?
Yes, basically, just so.
Everyone else, if there's any, it's, yes, I don't have to add anything, a second story to it. Uh, maybe the FEMA compliant. Road, um. Oh, I did have a question, which is not directly relevant, but more of a curiosity. Um, if you have to guess, and I know you didn't do the calculations, but you didn't need to, you're not changing it. Uh, what's the average front yard setback in the neighborhood? Is this, this, you know, is this approximately within, is it close, is it?
You know, it's, I, I don't have the number, but I do have an aerial views on the top of the page.
It's about the same, right?
Yeah.
So there we go, there, there, right here. So they're all more or less the same.
Yeah, they're close.
This might be a little. Okay.
Now, the, the river pinches right up against the roof.
Oh, yeah, there, there's not much you can do. It's, uh, it's an interesting location. All right. Uh, Bob, anything from you?
Uh, it will remain in order of conditions. That's really the only additional where I can, I can see, uh, the, if you don't happen to know if the number of bedrooms is going to be changing yet.
Um, no, the number of bedrooms will remain the same, uh, because it's on, because some.
So there should be, should be okay on the set. Okay, I'm good.
Uh, Ford. Folks in the room. Folks on Zoom. Nothing? Okay. I've made a motion that the applicant's, uh, request for a special permit to raise and reconstruct the, uh, dwelling, single-family dwelling located at three forty-seven Central Ave, uh, Situate, Mass. Uh, and increasing the gross floor area by more than forty percent, uh, per the plan of Morse Engineering, dated eleven eleven twenty twenty-two, be granted and that the board find that the, the raise and reconstruct as per the plan, uh, sets forth no new non-conformities and to the exist, to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, that intensification is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Granted. Granted, thank you.
I've got one after the fact.
Absolutely.
Curious and question about that. What's the significance, Jeff, of a one hundred foot river front yard?
Um, it's a setback to meet high water to the South River and, um, it's a conservation problem zone.
So it doesn't have any effect on the way you can or can't construct the building or anything like that?
No.
Right, thank you.
If there were difference of. Urgent property voided, there might be restrictions, but we're basically rebuilding.
Right.
I don't see anything, understood.
Thank you. So that was our sixth application. Are you pulled up tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Where you get the visiting ones?
Yeah, that's great. Um, no, I actually have a situat planning board, it's on the same day.
Yeah, so he's over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, on the seventh application of Joel and Molly Walker of fifty-two Gilson Road, Situate, Mass. Requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, section, section six and section eight, ten point two of the Situate zoning bylaws and or any other relief to the board of appeals may grant to allow for the construction in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at fifty-two Gilson Road, Situate, Mass. And increase the gross floor area by more than twenty percent.
Yeah, so the applicants on this, uh, are Dr. Joel and Molly Walker, who are here in the audience. Um, they're proposing addition to their single-family home at fifty-two Gilson Road. And the addition requires a chapter forty-eight, section six finding and a special permit under section eight, ten point two. Uh, the lot is eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six square feet. Uh, R three zoned and the home was built in nineteen twenty. The non-conformities include the lot size, which is eight thousand four hundred twenty-six. Uh, the lawn width, which is eighty-six point nine nine, where a hundred and twenty-five is required. And the, it's a corner lot, so it has two front yard setbacks. The required in this district is thirty. And the current setbacks to Foxwell are nineteen point six and then to Gilson Road are twenty-eight point six. So non-conforming to both of those roads. Uh, the proposed addition, uh, complies with the side setback, the rear setback, and it complies with the front yard setback to Gilson Road. Um, it does not conform to the front yard setback to Foxwell, but it is the same as the existing setback to the existing home. Um, so, uh, not creating a, a new non-conformity there. Uh, the, the addition brings the house size up to three thousand two hundred and seventy-one square, square feet, which is about a sixty-two percent increase. Uh, and again, no new non-conformities and the home is similar to other homes in the neighborhood as.
So I'm just, I'm just looking at the zoning table on the plan and reconciling it with the numbers. So. Um, what are you guys doing, uh, keeping the barn?
Uh, yes.
Okay, just asking. But no changes to it as is?
Right.
All right. Uh. So. There was. It's the other file. I think I got. Um.
So, very straightforward, I'm, I'm good.
Um. Ford?
Good.
Yeah, you know, the complicated, it's, it's two fronts, it's a corner lot, right? It's not really complicated and, and I'm just trying to, and I'm trying to get all the numbers straight, uh, for the zoning table. But. That's okay. All right, anybody from the audience, sort of speaking to the table? Anybody on Zoom on this?
Is, is there anything preventing a, um, uh, just like you mentioned, the rear setback for that, or is that like if, like where we have it to the rear of the lot?
Is that, so what, what are you calling? That's part of it, you have two fronts, you have two fronts, two sides and a rear on the, on, on the way you're doing the calculations.
Right, well, if you look at, if you look at the picture of the house, right, the, um, I guess the bottom side of it.
Uh, the deck is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, uh, whatever to the right, that right corner.
First bottom right corner.
Yeah, right there. If, if, if that could, is there a chance that that could just go back a little bit further or is that as far as you think it would be able to go? Cause I, I do, there was a question on the conformity, whether or not it could go actually to the, um, you know, the end of the barn, because the barn is what is not conformable on the lot itself. Not that I would ever wanna go that far.
Yeah, so, so that, that's a separate, that's a separate structure somehow. That's not that you can't go by where the barn is.
Okay.
Once you've connected the barn to the house, then it's all one.
Right.
One building, so to speak, and you're approaching in your, with the barn portion in, into your rear yard setbacks. So now you're making the whole house additionally non-conforming.
So weird, okay.
Well, it, it's only a little weird.
Right.
It's, it makes, it makes a logical sense, right? Because we're, we're trying to, the goal is not to have any sort of, uh, uh, new non-conformities. We're, we're effectively grandfathering in anything that's not conforming, right? Whether it's lot size or, or footprint, if you should. Um, all right, uh, that was a question from the homeowners. Question from Zoom? Any one? No? What do you guys?
We're good. Go on, make a motion. I'm good. Um, make a motion to approve the addition, proposed addition at fifty-two Gilson Road, Situate. Um, pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling as shown on a plan prepared by Morse Engineering dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, does not create any new non-conformities and to the extent that it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the surround, surrounding neighborhood and that the board approve and grant the relief.
Awesome. On favor?
Aye.
All right. Got it.
All right.
But.
The record for the non-conformities.
Give me.
Average.
Uh. All right, uh, we are done with the application. We have minutes. They look okay.
Okay.
I give a quick.
Of course they were.
I mean, no, sometimes, yeah.
And three of us were there, I think.
I, I was there.
I was there.
You were there, right? So we can, oh, we have a.
Needs.
Yes, it's a big, big, big bunch of that.
So it's, uh, October and then the June and November. Yep, okay.
Permanent.
Sorry, we're going forward. Um, so we put the minutes in, uh, any other business, you don't count it. We just gotta divide up the rest of the world.
Oh, shoot, right.
Okay. So, yeah, my house is now, we can do that now. Um, so with that, so with that, I'm going to, uh, adjourn the meeting. Okay, and, uh, thank you all. And this is the last meeting of this year, so happy holidays and happy new year.
Yeah.
Seth, we are done.
Yeah.